Good evening. The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for September the 5th, 2018, is now in session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
In just a moment, I'll ask you to join me in a moment of silence, but I want to, during that moment of silence, ask you to pay tribute to, or at least, at least acknowledge the fact that since our last meeting, we've lost two members of our community. We've probably lost more, but these are two that I knew well. Both of whom gave back to our community in so many ways. Tom Charlton and Mary Ann Milburn. Tom was an active member of the Fire Department for many years. Helped build this, whatever you call this thing, podium, or easel, or dais, and really worked in our town in so many ways. As he aged, he became a shuttle driver for people helping their hospital visits, and doctor visits, and go to the grocery store. He had a number of older people he helped out in that way. Mary Ann headed up the Outer Banks Food Pantry, Dare County Food Pantry, for four years, and did a terrific job as a volunteer. So, they were good neighbors, and good friends to those who knew them. So please join in a moment of silence if you would. Thank you. Counsel, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Chris.
I have a second.
Yeah, I have a second.
Yes.
A motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda's been approved. Think I'm okay with that. This time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Counsel, it's in your minute book. You can see it.
I'll so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This time, we'll have staff reports. Our deputy town manager, planning director, Wes Haskin. Good evening, Wes.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. I have a brief report for y'all tonight for the month of August. There were fourteen zoning permits issued, twenty-nine building permits issued. Those consisted of two new single-family dwellings, three additions, two remodels, three accessories, and nineteen others. There are currently nineteen single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in August was $10,644.60. With respect to code enforcement, there were two warning citations issued, one for a rear yard setback violation, and the other for one canal obstruction. With respect to the town's Historic Landmark Commission, they'll be meeting on September 25th at 9:00 a.m. here in the Pitt Center, and they'll be reconsidering the request to designate 170 Ocean Boulevard, also known as Pink Perfection, as a historic landmark. That consideration was tabled from the last meeting, since there wasn't a quorum present. Lastly, with respect to the planning board, they'll be meeting on September 17th at 5:30, and the board will consider a conditional use permit application submitted by the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department to construct a new fire station at 15 South Dogwood Trail. The board may also continue discussion of ZTA-1807 and ZTA-1807A, a text amendment submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend the Southern Shores Town Code by amending Section 36, 132, Regulation of Structures and Uses Nonconforming, and that will be subject to y'all's discussion and action tonight, of course. Any questions?
Any questions for Wes? Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
This time, I'll call on David Cole, our police chief. Evening, David.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council. The August 2018 monthly report, first thing we'll cover is the calls for service. We had thirteen hundred and ninety-two. As you can see, some of the breakdown, there were nineteen illegally parked vehicles. We had eighteen mutual aid requests from other agencies. Officers responded to fifteen alarms, twenty-two suspicious conditions. They had twenty-six traffic directs, another thirty-three requested extra patrols. They conducted ninety-three traffic stops, twenty-two residence checks, and eight hundred and thirty-nine business checks for the month. The incidents, which were the crimes reported, as you can see, there were six assaults reported, two breaking and entering. We had three larceny, four fraud, four vandalism. We had five that were drug-related, one DWI, driving while intoxicated, and we had two DOAs, which are unattended deaths. One hit-and-run motor vehicle accident, one found property, for a total of twenty-nine incidents for August. Under the arrest, we made one arrest for the assault, one for the breaking and entering, and four for the drugs, one for the driving while intoxicated, and one for the hit-and-run. Total of eight criminal arrests for the month. Had a total of three motor vehicles accident reports, and as you can see, out of the ninety-three traffic stops, the officers issued forty-six written citations, and another thirty-five warning citations. Our Community Resource Officer was mostly responsible for this, but as far as the ordinance violations, she wrote fifty failed-to-display for parking violations, another three for parking in the right-of-way, for a total of fifty-three. Just a couple of other things to add. Three weeks ago, we conducted our semi-annual active shooter training, where all the officers participated at Kitty Hawk Elementary School. We also, School Resource Officer is back in the school for the school season, and our Community Resource Officer is actually attending the Basic Law Enforcement Training Academy, but she'll be with us for about two more weekends, and hopefully she'll be successful at getting through the police academy. She did an extremely very good job this year. We had a lot of good compliments on her. Any questions?
Just one. The hit-and-run, did it involve a pedestrian or a cyclist?
I'd have to look that up. I have no idea.
Okay, okay. It's not that important for right now.
Okay.
I've heard of one on 158, which kind of ties in with something else that I've been looking at, so I'll just come by your office one day.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Edlin Bacher, our fire chief. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. So, for the month of August, the Fire Department responded to seventy-four total calls, and breakdown pretty simply is five structure fires, twelve patient assists, thirty-five EMS calls, one motor vehicle accident without injury, one child locked in a vehicle, two SURF rescue calls, six service calls, which basically amount to our wheelchair, beach wheelchair program, and people's batteries being replaced in their smoke detectors, one public service, one odor smoke, and then five smoke, or fire alarms. One light, or three lightning strikes with no fire, and that was all in the same, probably forty-five minutes, all three calls, all at the same time, so. I would like to mention, you know, I'm trying to not pat ourselves on the back too much, but I do like to say, when the guys do a good job, during the month, we had, one day there was three cardiac events going on at the same time, and we put four on one, five on the other, and three on the other call. So, in addition to EMS, they also have us helping in on those cardiac calls. It can get kind of difficult, so, just again, patting the guys on the back for what they're doing, so. I understand from the last meeting, the deputy chief informed me that there were some people asking about the long-term capital plan, and I would like to say that at this point, we don't anticipate asking for any more monies during the next budget cycle. The department's always continuously updating our strategic plan to ensure we're ready for any problems or incident to occur in our jurisdiction, as well as in Dare County, or in Curritah Counties for our mutual aid partners, so, just to kind of answer your question from the last meeting when I wasn't here.
Any questions for Ed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Town manager, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to run down with you, the East Dogwood Trail Walking Trail, which you approved as a project for this current fiscal year, started construction this week at the east end, working westward, and then the completion date for that project is January 23rd, 2019. The Yopon Trail capital improvement that the council approved, that contract was awarded, of course, and the contractor has mobilized, and they'll start actual construction around October 15th, when the moratorium lifts for the canals. Completion date for that project is May 15th, 2019. The Juniper Trail project that you approved, the bids are out, the specs are out now, the bids are due to be opened on September 25th. Of course, reporting that we're keeping a close eye, staff is keeping a close eye on Hurricane Florence for next week, as we enter our three more months of hurricane season. Report to you that Public Works continues with pothole recovery town-wide. That includes edging, and of course, we continue with our mowing in the summer season. The project that the council approved for facilities assessment, for the architectural firm to assess the four buildings in this complex, and also the Public Works building, that will begin next Wednesday, when the architects will be here to interview staff, department heads, and begin their assessments of the existing plans for these five buildings. And then finally, the project that council approved for a beach vulnerability update survey and a beach management plan, I sent council the latest update of that today from APTIM, and that survey is thirty percent complete, and the beach management plan is five percent complete. So as we get updates on that, I'll be forwarding those to council, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have the survey completed, hopefully. Be glad to try to answer any operational questions of the council.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
East Dogwood, Peter, I understand that came in under the engineer's estimate. Could you just let everybody know how far under that came? Because I thought it was fairly substantial.
Yeah, the engineer's estimate for that particular project had a low of two-hundred-and-one-thousand and a high of two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand. The low bid, the lowest bid from qualified responsive bidder was a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty. The highest bid was two-hundred-and-fifty-two, nine-thirty-six. The median bid was a hundred-and-sixty thousand.
So, significant monies.
We have some cost on top of that, of approximately $10,000 for subsurface testing, so it'll come out to be about little under a hundred-and-fifty.
Any other questions? Thank you, Peter. Town attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, Ben. This time, a little general public comment. Anyone who signed up back there in the back? Thank you, Sheila. While we're waiting for that, I would make one quick announcement. As we move down the agenda here, we're going to have the second item under new business is going to be to hear from the firm that designed the new fire station, potential new fire station, and when he's finished that, I'm going to take a couple-minute break and allow our Fire Department individuals, our firefighters, and everyone else there who came in to join them. Appreciate you being here, too, by the way, to leave the room if they want to, or stay if they want to. But anyway, we'll take a little break from the normal movement of the meeting forward, and let them do what they wish about leaving or staying. Good evening, Pat.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and council members. Thank you for your time in letting us address you this evening. My name is Pat Broome, and I'm here on behalf of the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. I'm the incoming board chair, and our current board chair, Bob Peal, couldn't be with us tonight because he's speaking to the Mantiot Town Council. We're coming to address you tonight over the issue of year-round housing in the Outer Banks. I'm going to read you a letter that we're passing out to you just for recording in the minutes. "The housing crisis on the Outer Banks is real. Help-wanted signs are seen everywhere, and we hear from businesses daily about their inability to find workers. This is not just a seasonal challenge, it has become a year-round problem. Professional jobs go unfulfilled at our hospital and in our healthcare system. People are hired but can't find reasonably-priced housing options, so they decline to accept the jobs. The community college is trying to offer technical classes but can't find instructors for the same reason. The Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce forged a committee in the spring of 2017 to look into this challenge. We included, this includes not only the seasonal workforce, but year-round rentals and reasonably-priced single-family homes. The committee includes stakeholders from around the region and across industries and businesses. We learned early on that zoning is one of the core issues when it comes to addressing the housing crisis. A number of current zoning ordinances in the county and towns make addressing this critical issue difficult. With this in mind, the chamber and its committee have been reviewing densities, have been reviewing ordinances to determine where changes can allow for less restrictive lot sizes, higher densities, and development in appropriate areas, thus creating opportunities for private developers to address the housing crisis. Together, we can ensure that our community has the services it needs, backed by skilled, competent, and caring people." I'm going to mention a few items that have been identified, and we would like to ask the town council to direct your planning staff and board to review these requests to determine whether you think Southern Shores can help address this issue. We would request that you add a few definitions to your zoning ordinances. Add or amend a definition for an accessory dwelling unit as a secondary dwelling unit established on one parcel in conjunction with a principal dwelling unit. This should be defined, of a defined size, as you so determine. An accessory dwelling unit may be included as part of the principal dwelling unit or entirely detached. Add a definition for long-term rentals or occupancy as a residential dwelling that is occupied and used for residency and housekeeping purposes for a period of thirty-one or more days. Add a definition of short-term occupancy as a residential unit that is used for a period of less than thirty days. With regard to accessory dwelling units, we'd ask that you consider allowing accessory dwelling units as defined above to be permitted to be used everywhere that allows for single-family residences and duplexes, and restrict the use of accessory dwelling units approved under these new guidelines for long-term rentals or long-term occupancy as defined. We thank you for taking the time to consider this request. This could be a first step in helping to ease the housing crisis and workforce shortages across Dare County. Thank you.
Jim Groff? Good evening, Jim.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm Jim Groff, 102 South Dogwood Trail. At the last council meeting, you may recall that I urged you to seriously consider rebuilding South Dogwood Trail, since in my professional opinion, as an engineer, that road is failing rapidly, and that's shown in the first picture. Let me point out that the vast majority of South Dogwood Trail is nineteen feet wide. UPS trucks, dump trucks, school buses are all eight-and-a-half feet wide. If you slap two of them together, that's used up seventeen feet of that nineteen-foot roadway. But you can't put two of them tight together. They have to pass, and so the second, that means that their curbside wheels are on the edge of the road or off the road, and the second picture shows the results of that. Now, I know rebuilding South Dogwood Trail is extremely controversial. It's expensive, it's going to cost a lot of inconvenience, it's going to require trees to be removed, and a multi-use path is going to chew up a lot of frontage. Because of the controversy, I urge you to consider holding a referendum on South Dogwood Trail. Give all our citizens two choices, and only two. Repave South Dogwood at its existing width, or rebuild South Dogwood at two current engineering standards, and add a multi-use path. If you pursue the referendum, however, there's two vital pieces of information that you have to give the citizens for purposes of their voting. You have to give them the annualized cost over a fifteen- or twenty-year period of repaving versus rebuilding the road, so that people know the value of their vote. And then the second part of it is, you have to tell them how you're going to pay for this project, whether it be by grant, or bond issue, tax increase, whatever. Next to the Ocean Boulevard Duck Road Corridor, which is state-maintained, South Dogwood is the busiest thoroughfare in Southern Shores. On any off-season weekend, an average of twelve-hundred vehicles travel north, that's just traveling north, not the southbound, on South Dogwood, and a portion of East Dogwood Trails. That number almost quadruples during tourist season. There's absolutely nothing we can do about it, except to accept the fact that it is what it is, and fix South Dogwood Trail. And the reason it is what it is, is because all of us have built houses on South Dogwood Trail. It's the right thing to do, to fix it, and it needs to be done soon. Let's get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, council. Most of you know me as proprietor of Coastal Provisions Next Door, but I'm here before you as a member of the Chamber's Housing Committee as well, but also as head of the Outer Banks Restaurant Association, and here to tell you, as a business owner and as head of an association of a hundred businesses, the housing crisis is real, and it is probably one of the major issues that we confront with our labor shortage. I mean, our membership is screaming bloody murder about labor. None of, I don't know any restaurant that is fully staffed, and hasn't been all year, and it's only going to get worse. We've taken measures to decide to do outside recruiting. I was just in Charlotte last week, meeting with Johnson and Wales University, Culinary University, to work on recruiting there, arranged to go to their career fairs. Very first question I'm asked, housing, what's it like? We have to address this. It's a real issue, not only for the seasonal workforce, but also for the professionals, finding teachers, finding healthcare. I understand that Southern Shores is primarily a residential community. You know, we do have, you know, small commercial activities. In fact, Food Lion is one of the biggest employers of the J-1 visa program in the county. So, and I know many residents here have opened their doors to J-1 visas, to host J-1 visas for housing. That's only a small part of the problem. We have to address the year-round for the professionals, whether it be healthcare professionals that are coming in, or teachers. If we want all of these services as a community, not just Southern Shores, but the entire Dare County, we have to address the housing community, because we can't bring new blood to the Outer Banks to work in our, and provide services for all of us if we can't address the housing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Matt.
Matt Neal, 163 Wax Myrtle, and current president of the Outer Banks Home Builders Association. I wanted to second the comments from the members of the chamber about the housing crisis. I think it's imperative, and would be very important for you to instruct the planning board to look at some of those recommendations. You can always deny them, but exploring it is the first step, and you might come up with a better solution. It might be something that fits better for the town, but to turn your back on it and not even look into it is ignoring a problem that we are suffering very, very, very strongly on, on the Outer Banks. And it's my industry, it's their industry, it's going to be, it's going to be, you're not going to find a plumber, you're not going to find a landscaper, you're not going to have so many wait on their tables, restaurants are closing doors. We need to find an answer. There's some number out there, thirty-six-hundred housing units need to come online to meet our demand, and we're working county-wide to try to answer this, and it all starts here at these local council meetings. So, I'd ask that you take a look at, or instruct the planning board to look at some of their recommendations, and maybe offer your own. The other comment I would have is, the two ZTAs that are coming up today are very hot topic and controversial issues, and there's been a lot of back and forth on it, and I heard lots of comments about building industry and things of that nature in some of the discussions. I want to say, as a representative of building industry, there's no desire for members of our community to irrationally develop land, and that's just a fact, and I think everybody here should appreciate that, and often what we're doing is often our clients' request. When it comes to lot coverage in particular, I don't want to get into minutia of the details, but Southern Shores has some unique interpretations of lot coverage that other towns don't have, and lot coverage originated initially to allow ground infiltration of stormwater. That's where the number comes from, so when the definitions come up, they should relate to stormwater. If you don't want them to, and you want them to relate to anti-development or less development, then that can be a direction you go, but have the conversation one way or the other. The planning board talked very, very thoroughly on this, and you had very conscientious members of building industry comment on that at the planning board, and I think they gave you some great recommendations, and it's a compromise that maybe is something that I would like to see a good discussion on today, and as well as their recommendations for the others' ETA. So, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Matt. This time, I'll close public comment. First item under new business is to have me make a motion to cancel the regular meeting of October the 2nd, 2018, due to lack of agenda items pursuant to Council Resolution 2017-12-02. I would make that motion this time, counsel, and ask for a second.
I'll second that motion.
I have a second to the motion. Is there any discussion? Yes, Fred.
Why are we canceled?
We have insufficient items on the agenda to discuss. There's no agenda items for us to discuss. We've known this for two months. Nobody's come to us, or the town manager, or the clerk, and offered items they'd like to have discussed on that next meeting.
Well, if nothing else, we could have staff reports. Keeps the public informed of what's going on. Gives the public an opportunity to speak, public comments. I don't understand why we're canceling the meeting. I mean, it makes no sense. I mean, these meetings are for the public, as well as for us to conduct business, and I can't support canceling the meeting.
All right, that's fine. Chris, any thoughts?
I'd say let's just call for that.
Gary, any further discussion?
I think we have items to be on that agenda for October. Probably going to have planning, probably going to have some discussion on the Fire Department. We may have plans back on that. We certainly need to make sure we get through the item that's, we're going into session for tonight, and that's going to have to, I don't think we're going to get it finished tonight, and it needs to be done. It's behind now.
What was that, November?
I think that's supposed to be done by July 31, and so we're way behind. I would suggest that we just go ahead with it.
What was that, November? That's already been agreed to by the town manager. It's his right-of-way.
I understand that, but plus we have, you know, like Fred said, we have the police chief, the fire chief, we have those reports that come forward every month, and I mean, I don't see any reason to cancel.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, council? I'd just like to vote on it. All in favor of canceling the October 2nd meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Aye. We have two opposed, and three in favor of canceling the meeting for October, it's been canceled. We can call a special meeting anytime if necessary. I'd be glad to do that, if enough of you believe it's important.
Yeah, but why call a special meeting? We can have a regular meeting. Makes no sense.
Because we have no agenda items for a regular meeting right now, Fred. I already said that once. If we have an agenda item that comes up that's critical, you're talking about, we can have a special meeting.
Okay. I give up, Tom.
Thank you. This time, other than Ken Newell, who's going to talk to us about the design and details of our potential new fire station, and you've seen pictures of it, and Ken's going to go over that with us now. Good evening, Ken.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me out here again tonight. It's exciting times that we're in, and I wanted to give you a report. We had promised a couple of months ago, a few months ago, to come back and give you a report on the status of the project at this point. So, we are just days away from completing the design process on the station. The station is currently under review for permitting. All of the necessary agencies that will review the plans and site work and everything for permitting are doing so now. We anticipate by the last week of this month going out to bid with the project, putting it out for public bid opportunities, and then by the end of October, receiving bids, public bids on the project, so that at that point, we'll know what the cost of construction should be for the facility. And then, again, as promised, we would come back to you the first meeting in November to present those results, and discover your pleasure at that point in time. So, what you see in front of you today is, first, the first image on the screen is the site plan of the new facility. Thank you. So, that's the site plan. It really hasn't changed any significant way since the beginning, so the front of the station is facing South Dogwood, and the side of the station on Pentel Tribe, and then the rear of the station butts up against the existing public works facility, with some parking associated with that, and a fence between the two. This is the floor plan, updated floor plan, really hasn't changed much since you saw it last, it's just been further developed in terms of construction documents. Four double-loaded drive-through bays, and the administrative and living spaces necessary for the minimal operations of the fire department. This is the front exterior elevation-facing Dogwood Trail, with the masonry and standing seam metal roof conditions. We are taking a couple of alternate bids for alternative roof surfaces, roof materials, and skin of the building. So, what you see in front of you is masonry materials with standing seam metal roof, and we're taking alternative bids, so that that metal roof could become a shingle roof, and we'll evaluate what the cost differences between the two are. Just again, another opportunity to make sure that we're getting the most cost-effective station, and then the exterior metal skin of the building, taking an alternative to go to the cementitious board, a brand name of Hardy Plank, many of you are familiar with that as well. This is some of the 3D images, sketch-up models of those stations. The two images on the right are the views from Dogwood Trail itself, and then the images on the left are at the rear of the site that would be adjacent or abutting to the public works facility. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Again, we're excited. We anticipate within the next two to three weeks being out to bid for bid process, and giving them about four weeks' worth of bidding. Any questions?
I'd just like to thank you for the info meeting, the couple hours you came before the meeting started. I was kind of disappointed that more people from the town didn't show up, but, you know, we'll hear from them eventually.
Sure.
But that was a very helpful two hours.
We're glad to be here, and to educate the public is our goal as well. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I've got two questions. One, have you updated your cost estimates? And two, have you looked at various alternatives to proposing a new fire department, or got other ideas, or we're just going to be provided one proposal?
Um...
Or one design?
Let me go to your second question first. Are you looking for something besides building a new fire station? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking the question, are there other alternatives other than just this one that you're presenting?
Back in the study that was performed two, two and a half years ago, I think that the opportunities or options were evaluated then, what would be the cost of demolition, renovation, things of that nature, and the study indicated that it would not be cost-sensitive to make a replacement because of the type of structure. The existing structure has got a number of problems. The report back at that time identified some of those. Most importantly is, it didn't satisfy functionally the facilities, and it did not meet the current code requirements of essential facilities. So, I hope that answers, I don't know if that answers your question. In terms of looking at other sites or other locations, we have not looked at that. No, sir.
Okay, and how about, what's your updated estimate?
Yes, on the site, I think the last time that I was in front of the council, I indicated that the economy, the construction bid climate, is extremely volatile. It's only gotten more volatile during that time period, and so it is a wide range of results that we're seeing bids come in currently. I would estimate that we could expect to see, and it's a wide range, but I would expect we could see anywhere from 325 a square foot to 425 a square foot. It's just, many of the projects that we're seeing bid right now are coming in right where we expect them to. Some are coming in lower, some are coming in higher. So, there's been a lot of talk already tonight about the labor market, and housing shortage, and things of that nature, so a lot of it does depend on what the local bidding climate looks like, and whether a lot of that labor is going to have to come from off-island or not.
So, what's the total square footage?
Just over thirteen thousand square feet.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I've got one. It's, where do you bid this? I mean, does this go out to, or do we even have any local contractors here that are qualified to build a building like this?
I don't know the answer about qualified, but for instance, one of the two people that showed up for public meeting today, one of them was a representative of a local general contracting firm.
Okay.
So, the answer to your first question is, it will be publicly advertised. It will be advertised on the town website, it'll be advertised in any public realms that are required by ordinance to advertise that. There are many contracting agencies across the state that stay in touch with us as architects to make sure that we're letting them know when it's going to be bid, and by extending that bid period for a four-to-five week period of time, it gives ample opportunity for bidders to come in and subcontractors to bid as well. So, the more bidders we have, the better normally you would expect the pricing to be. So, our goal is that it be advertised and distributed as much as possible. Does that answer your question?
Yes. In other words, the local, if there are any local contractors that are qualified to work on something like this, they should get the word, and that's what I'm getting at.
Absolutely.
That the locals get at least a level playing field.
Absolutely, and it's not...
Because too often, something like this just goes out, and they never even look locally.
Yes, sir. And we encourage as much local participation, not just at the main general contractor level, but all the many hundreds of subcontract levels as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you for having me. Yes, sir. We appreciate it.
Good to see you again. We're going to delay starting our public hearing portion, Item C. If you folks, firefighters want to leave at this time, you certainly can do that, or you can stick around, it's totally your call. I'll move as quickly as you tell me to move. Thanks for coming out, guys. This time, I'll call on Glenn Weeder, our planning board chair, for presentation on ZTA 1804. I think that's right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, public. In our regular planning board meeting of Monday, August 20th, we discussed two zoning text amendments, ZTA 1807-A and ZTA 1804, both of which have been previously discussed in their current form, or in the case of ZTA 18-7A, a reworked version of the previously discussed, ZTA 18-07. Looking to the future, the two, these two ZTA's are very important issues regarding land use here in Southern Shores, and I want to compliment the planning board, because as a team, we went above and beyond in research and due diligence regarding both items. As a board, we took a systematic approach to the analysis of the information presented in both applications. The results of that analysis are in the following report, and we'll start with ZTA 1804, and of course, I'll come back when you call the other one. ZTA-18-04 is proposed rewrite of Section 36-202-D, I'm sorry, of the Town of Southern Shores Code of Ordinances. This ETA was a bit complicated by the fact that it has eight points of discussion, six of which are additional language to the current code. In an effort to address these proposed points of new language, I determined that the most efficient way to do so was to address one at a time, and then call for a vote of the board on the single point, and then move on to the next one. Following is a result of that vote. Given the fact that this ETA, in various forms, has been discussed, dating back to August 7th, 2017, and four times following that date, it's a hope that the recommendation, it's our hope as a board, a unanimous hope, that the recommendation that is to follow will be adopted by the town, and will finally put this issue to rest. The planning board had no issues with the first two points, that is, 6A and 6B, as they are in the current code. There was vigorous discussion and significant research done, and presented by the board members regarding 6C through H. Following is a result of the votes on the individual points. 6C, pervious materials and turf stone pavers for driveways and parking areas contribute 50% to lot coverage. The unanimous five-to-zero vote to remove that from ZTA 1804. 6D, gravel walkways shall not contribute to lot coverage. There was a five-to-zero unanimous vote that that remain in ZTA 1804. 6E, the outermost four feet of the eve shall not contribute to lot coverage. Again, a unanimous vote to remove from ZTA 1804. 6F, up to 500 square feet of the water area of a swimming pool shall not contribute to lot coverage. The unanimous five-to-zero vote to remove that from ZTA 1804. 6G, open slatted decks that allow water to penetrate through to pervious material, not exceeding a total of 25% of the total footage, square footage, of the area of the attached single-family dwelling, shall not contribute to lot coverage. There was a three-to-two vote in favor of allowing that to remain in ZTA 1804. 6H, and I'm going to read the amended version of 6H, because of the vote that I just went through. 6H, there was a five-zero vote for this to remain in 1804, as written in the one I'm about to read to you. 6H, these allowances and/or exemptions listed in subsection G of this Paragraph 6 shall be available only to an applicant for a building zoning permit for a single-family dwelling or an attached open-slatted deck over pervious material, upon presentation of a survey with all applicable requirements, including planned certification for a lot disturbance and stormwater management permit, as described in Section 36-171-3 of the Town Code of Ordinances. As I said, that language was voted on five-to-zero, unanimous, to remain in the ZTA 1804. It is the unanimous vote of the planning board that ZTA 18-04, with the above amendments, is consistent with the town's adopted comprehensive zoning ordinance, or ordinance, land use plan, and other officially adopted plans that is applicable. And that's the presentation for 1804. Are there any questions?
Any questions with Glenn?
Just one. So, let me get this straight on, what came to you, you eliminated the pools. Is that, that's correct, right?
Well, there were actually, there were three things that were eliminated.
Yeah, I got that part, but when you were reading like an H, those allowances and/or exemptions...
The pool was removed from that language.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
You heard right, Jim.
And there is, there is a, a planning board recommended ZTA, which I believe should be in their packets. Yeah.
Yes.
And that language is in there, the way I just wrote it, basically.
Right.
Any other questions?
Could you talk a little bit about G? You got a three-to vote, and just give us some of the concerns.
Well, that one probably had the most discussion, obviously, because it was three-to-two, and two of the board members felt pretty strongly that we should not allow that, that it should be removed. Again, the consideration that went back and forth, and we had discussion on this the previous time we talked about it, that went on ad nauseam, back and forth, about how tight to do the boards, if the boards are apart, if they're not apart, back and forth. Bottom line is, the water goes through the deck, if there's pervious material underneath, it was, it was a majority opinion that that should be allowed, and that's basically how we came to that conclusion.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
This time, Ben, I'll ask you to take over the public hearing for me. We'll proceed with that.
This is a legislative public hearing. People who speak will not have to be sworn. Public hearing will be on ZTA 18-18-04, regarding changes to Town Code Section 36-202-D. Was there a sign-up sheet for this one, Sean? First, we'll have Mr. Haskett speak and provide comment from a staff perspective, then I'll go through the names on the sign-up sheet, and then after that, if there's anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing, I'll ask if you would raise your hands and come forward. Mr. Haskett?
Thank you, and good evening, Ben. Good evening again, members of council. Chairperson Weeder summarized everything pretty well, the application before you, ZTA 1804. In your package, you received a planning board recommended version as compared to the original version, and in it, there would only be Items C, D, and E, which were gravel walkways shall not contribute to lot coverage, the open-slatted decks language, as well as revised E, so that a stormwater management plan is required, should someone want to use Option D for the open-slatted decks. I will touch on that it is, the planning board did determine it consistent with the land use plan as currently stated by, or previously stated by Mr. Weeder, and the town staff concurs that the recommended version, the proposed amendments, are consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan. Do you all have any questions?
Does that require an engineer report as far as stormwater management for that open-slatted deck?
For E, yes, sir. It is an engineered document. Requires an engineer's seal, or possibly landscape architect. Anyone duly authorized in the state, I believe, is what the language reads.
Any other questions for Mr. Haskett? Councilman McDonald, did you have another question?
I was just, when you say anyone certified, not a certified engineer?
I believe landscape architect may be qualified to do, to do that. Like I said, if they're duly authorized by the state. Like I said, if they're duly authorized by the state.
Should we put language in there to require an engineer report?
You could specify an engineer, it's up to you all if you wanted to revise it to be specifically to certified by an engineer, a North Carolina registered engineer.
I think we're starting to tread on state law here because state law has specific people who are qualified. An architect can do it. I could do it as a landscape architect. I don't even know what other professions, but generally out here, it's an engineer because the North Carolina certifications, it's just a pain in the neck to work with the state, so I would doubt that Chris does storm drainage design. I do not. It's all down to the engineers. Surveyors, I think, are another one that can. So I think the way you've got it worded, Wes, is the correct way, by an engineer or other person duly authorized by the state to prepare such certifications as storm drainage plans.
As, as staff, I would, I would prefer it be an engineer who provides the documentation. I couldn't, I maybe not be able to legally demand it, but I think it would be the first option, the first preference.
Practically speaking, that is the person who do it. Usually it's a civil engineer.
I would say it should be, but...
I mean, and that's who, and I mean, I think you are, under state law, permitted to do it.
Right.
If you don't do it, I've never done one. I don't even know how to do it.
Yeah, but I think when we start requiring only an engineer can do it, then you're running afoul of state law.
Well, and more importantly, practically speaking, it's never going to happen. It's probably never going to happen if...
I don't know. We might get some landscape architect, for example, from Raleigh who does storm drainage all the time, and...
Well, true. And if they're qualified, then you can't tell them not to.
Yes.
They're licensed by the state, so I don't...
I understand what you're getting at, Councilman McDonald, but we need to be careful that we're not going against state law because, I mean, I've, boy, I opened up a huge can of worms down in Kill Devil Hills when they started, you know, saying it had to be a surveyor, for example.
I'm just thinking, what we see today is when people build, they raise their lots.
In some cases, yes, sir.
In the past, people just built, leveled out what they did, cleared it, put a house up. Now people are raising, and we see the results of that, where you have the stormwater running off through the adjacent properties, and we have spent, probably in the last two years, you know, this council spent probably close to half a million dollars working on stormwater and different areas, and I don't want to see us get in a situation to where this contributes to even more need of runoff and that kind of thing on the people's property. That's my, that's my concern with the open-slatted deck, and even if the ground's pervious underneath, after a while with the water going through, it becomes packed and does not allow it to flow like it did. So you have those types of things, plus if anything grows under there, you have issues with drainage. So then where does it go? Off the property or somewhere else? So what I'm trying to do is say, if we've got that, we're not, as we say every time, we're not equipped to follow up. It's usually complaint-driven, and I know we get those complaints from time to time, but we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're going to have to spend more money where it's running off to properties and that kind of thing. And my other concern with the gravel walkways, how are we going to monitor that? Because two weeks after I get my occupancy permit, I can come back and lay in stone or pavers.
That's a good point. It's most of our...
Is anybody going to check me?
Most of our ordinances are enforced on a complaint-driven basis.
Right. So, and I think that's where our original code came from.
And a lot, also, other than complaints, when someone wants to make improvements later on, it'll show up when they come with a proposed site plan or as-built survey that shows that it was actually changed from the original.
It ends up being self-regulated.
It'll catch up with itself eventually in most cases.
And sometimes when the seller goes to sell it, the first thing they, they do is they get a survey as part of the closing, and when they show that they're over lot coverage, that affects the sale.
Right.
It could affect the sale.
But...
So it, it is consumer complaint-driven, but it, but it also self-regulates itself because if somebody goes crazy, then they have to remove coverage.
They're a valid concern for sure, and you all can accept the planning board's recommendation, or you all can revise it however you all see fit. But the intent of E is so that we, they do have to produce a document or an engineered plan that shows that it will not impact or adversely affect adjacent properties.
And we gave you the authority to ask recent, not recently, maybe the last six months, gave you as the, as the...
Zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator, the authority to ask anybody, any builder, developer, owner at any time for an engineered stormwater. Is that correct?
That ordinance does contain the flexibility to judge situations on a case-by-case basis.
So if in your discretion, something came up, and today, this is a really hilly lot, and we're seeing the potential for water to come off this lot, then at that point, you might say, okay, listen, I want to see where this water is going, so it doesn't go into the streets, it doesn't go onto your neighbor's property.
The section 36-171.3 does, or 36-171 does establish that authority. Yes, sir.
Which is, I would agree with Councilman, remember, McDonald, I think that the stormwater prevention measures are good, and I think that most good builders would agree to those also. And the homeowners, when they're living in there, frankly, they want them. Whether one builds up or not, I think that might be a trigger to say, okay, give us more information, show us you're holding all your water. In my experience, I've seen the other way around, that the streets actually put more water on people's lands than anything else.
With the amount of rain we had several weeks ago, it's certainly a hot topic.
Yeah, so anyways.
Any other questions for Mr. Haskett?
And we have to always remember that we have no sewer system, we have septic tanks.
That's correct.
And when those, when the, when the water table comes up, whether we like it or not, they fill up, and that can be a health hazard that we need to be aware of.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Haskett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Chairperson Sullivan, 3110th Avenue. My, my comments are brief. I'd like to express my appreciation to the planning board for their well-thought-out recommendations for lot coverage, and I urge the council to adopt this set of recommendations. These changes support our vision for our community as laid out in our land use plan, and more importantly, are in line with the 63% of people surveyed as part of the survey for the Town Code rewrite, who do not want to change lot coverage. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, there's no one else signed up for the public hearing? Is there anyone who did not sign up who would like to speak to the public hearing? If you could raise your hand really high. All right, I don't see anybody. Mr. Mayor, I will close the public hearing and hand it back to you for consideration.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would, well, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, maybe you're saying the same thing. I would say, I want to also thank the planning board for their work, and, and I appreciate their willingness to compromise on this, and I think, I would support this measure, and I'd make a motion to accept this as a board.
I'll second that motion, too.
To accept the planning board's recommendation?
Yes, it would be the 404?
ZTA 18-04, the most recent planning board version.
The most recent planning board suggestions, as Ms. Sullivan mentioned.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I did.
Any further discussion?
I think we should leave it as it is, and I'm just thinking, well, we have all seen our stormwater issues over the past two years that I've been on this council, and we've spent money to take care of those, and we have a lot more that we need to take care of. And I see this as an issue of just adding more density to our neighborhoods, which goes against what our original founders wanted for our community. So I, I just think we should leave it as is, and there's no way, we are not monitoring these types of issues. I do appreciate what the planning board did. My feeling is, we shouldn't have sent it back to them. It was voted on in October, and we should leave it as it was when we voted on in October.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. I, I agree with Gary. I think we should leave it as is, but if we've got to compromise, I think the planning board did a good job, and I can, I can probably live with it.
You two had that same meeting.
Yeah, I was there.
And I thought they...
No, it was, it was good debate. I thought they did an excellent job, and I got to commend Glenn. He's, he's a great leader and did a great job. I would prefer leaving it as is, but if, if we've got to compromise, I can, I can handle it. So I'd support it.
So I guess the question I'd ask is, all in favor of the planning board's recommendation of adopting this revised lot coverage provisions? All in favor of accepting that or adopting that, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Same side.
One, two. Brad, did you? I didn't hear your vote. I didn't see the vote.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Did you get that, Sheila? Motion's been made and carried to adopt the planning board version as presented to Thank you. This time, I'll call on Mr. Weider again to talk about...
Well, I'd say good evening again to you all. Well, good evening. Okay, on the second ZTA, ZTA 18-07A, proposed rewrite of section 36-132A of the Town of Southern Shores Code of Ordinances. In the rewrite, the board unanimously agreed with all aspects of paragraph two, addressing the growing concern regarding the teardown of a house currently standing on two non-conforming lots, then building two houses on each of the said non-conforming lots. We were unanimously in agreement with paragraph two. It's paragraph one that raised our concern about, our concern about the viability of this ZTA. After much discussion and presentation of significant research, it was determined that paragraph one completely missed the issue of parcels of land with one owner that consisted of multiple non-conforming lots, lots that could conceivably be sold off as single lots having multiple houses built on said parcels. This was determined to be an enormous, enormous loophole that would be, and could be, and would be taken advantage of by a small group of individuals who have absolutely zero regard for the town's currently adopted land use plan, which contains the following, policy number two, and I'm going to read it because I think it's important. "Community values and the town will continue to comply with the founders' original vision for Southern Shores." And I put this part in bold, "A low-density residential community comprised of single-family dwellings on large lots, served by a small commercial district for convenient shopping and services located at the southern end of the town. This blueprint for land use naturally protects environmental resources and fragile areas by limiting development and growth. It is for this reason that the planning board unanimously rejected ZTA 18-07A, and if given the choice of one or the other, recommends that the town council revert to the original ZTA 18-07." Of course, the original does have some flaws regarding single, non-conforming lot owners that we believe should be further considered, and we are more than willing to discuss that at our meeting on September 17th. So in conclusion, it's a unanimous vote of the planning board that ZTA 18-07A is not consistent with the town's adopted comprehensive zoning ordinance, land use plan, and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. This concludes my presentation on 18-07A. Do you have any questions?
Could you just briefly describe the difference between the two versions, as simply as you can? I know it's a big thing to...
It's really not, Chris, it's really not a brief discussion because, first of all, we didn't discuss 07 at all. That was not part of our mandate. Our mandate was 07A. So we discussed 07 at a previous time. You know, again, this is, this is, this is a second or third, I've lost, I've lost count, but we've had this discussion before. So, you know, I think the general consensus was that in 07, it was overly restrictive in paragraph one to a fault where if someone had a home built on a conforming lot which consisted of two non-conforming lots, and they owned a non-conforming lot next to it, they're on an island. If they purchased that lot next to them, they're on an island. They can't build on it. So, you know, we felt that 07 was overly restrictive in that regard. It was unfair to someone who would be in the situation that I just described.
Okay.
Okay? 07A, I'll re, I'll re-quote what I said at the meeting. 07A was the Lincoln Tunnel. I mean, you could drive, you know, you could drive a truck through that thing.
Okay.
You know, the loophole was so enormous, it was just, it just, you know, we've got, we've got three builders on our board, and it was unanimous, unanimous, that that paragraph absolutely just killed the viability of ZTA-18-07A.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just to, just to reinforce what I've, what I'm hearing, I think the 1807 is the one that would pretty much put a stop to this speculative purchasing and trying to come with building permits on these, on these individual lots that are, to be, to be subdivided and make two lots of. It also hampers the other, the other party who just happens on one lot, but that's okay, we can live with that for a while, and you can address that, I think, at some future time.
I, yeah, and, and I, and, you know, again, we've, we've tentatively put it on our, you know, on our agenda for the next meeting, just kind of assuming that it may come back to us one more time. So I'm a planner, I like to have things ready just in case.
Right.
So, you know, the bottom line is, we would be more than happy to address it. I think the first paragraph in both ZTA's, one is too restrictive and the other one is ridiculously non-restrictive. So, you know, again, I, I think we, we would most certainly be prepared to discuss it again, but it's our recommendation that you do adopt. If we're given the choice of one or the other, it is our recommendation that you adopt ZTA-18-07, and that was unanimous, five to zero.
Counsel, I'd make a motion that we adopt 18... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Public hearing.
Let's have a public hearing on A first, and...
Okay, I got it. I got it. Sorry, Ben.
It's all right.
There's no more questions for me?
Got ahead of myself.
Am I dismissed?
Passed my bench time.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Now you got a public hearing.
Again, this is another legislative public hearing, this time on ZTA-18-07A, and recognizing that ZTA-07 has had a first reading and had a public hearing already, I would recommend that after the public hearing for this, that the council consider one or the other or neither, or some changes to one or the other. But after the public hearing that we have for 7A, so that you can have both in front of you. Just like the last time, we'll need no one to sign up, so that makes that easy. So if anyone in, in the audience would like to speak, if you just raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. And...
And to make clear, this is a public hearing for seven alpha, A.
Right.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Ann Schirdsma, 69 Hickory Trail. I'd like to answer the question about the difference between... I'd like to answer the question about the difference between oh-seven and oh-seven A by saying that Ben is the one to answer that question. He knows both of these CTAs inside and out. And he worked very hard on the first one, oh-seven, to deal with the various, um, what-ifs that might come up and also to deal with tricky things like what is ownership? What is adjacent? There are some ways to get around, um, what this ZTA is designed to prevent, simply by using LLCs or otherwise disguising ownership so it doesn't appear like the same owner owns the, both properties. And I think Ben did an excellent job of trying to anticipate that and not allow that to happen. The main problem with oh-seven A is that it drops out the sale, um, alternative. So, and I can give you a perfect example because I own with my family a ocean, oceanfront lot that is vacant, undeveloped, never been developed. It's a hundred feet wide. It is made up of two non-conforming fifty-foot wide lots. We could, right now, take that lot, divide it in two, and sell those properties separately and you would na, you would have two houses sitting right at the corner of the split in the road where Duck Road and Ocean Boulevard are. Because that's the property we own and there would be two houses sitting right there if we were to sell off our property as two separate lots. I will not ever do that, but my siblings might be otherwise inclined. And this is what I would ask you to be sure to prevent, the sale of undeveloped lots, vacant land. There was an emphasis in the first, um, oh-seven, when Ben first drafted it, on raising structures that are there and selling and then putting up two new houses. And the first version omitted the sales problem. So what you need to do is combine all these alternatives, options, way to develop these lots so that there's two houses where there once was one or where there is none, into one ZTA. And as Glenn said, oh-seven A leaves the enormous loophole of the sale. You can make the sale if you pass ZTA oh-seven A. I can sell my lot as two lots and they can be developed. That's the enormous loophole, that's the Lincoln Tunnel and the truck. Now, oh-seven had the problem that came up with Emily Osband, where she had property here and property like this, perpendicular. And this was considered adjacent, the perpendicular property. But it doesn't necessarily have to be defined as adjacent. And we discussed that at the Planning Board meeting. There may be some way to tweak the definition of adjacent so that they're parallel lots, um, rather than perpendicular. And I think that sort of sidetracked your discussion earlier on eighteen oh-seven. So, in my opinion, eighteen oh-seven is the better ZTA. It's the most thoughtful, the most comprehensive, but it needs some tweaking. And if that's gonna go to the Planning Board again, well, the Planning Board is more than up to the chore, to the task. But oh-seven A is not what this town needs to preserve the low-density development and to prevent the two-for-one on the lots. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
And I mistakenly didn't ask Mr. Haskett to speak. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Haskett?
Mr. Weider covered everything pretty much, and then I'm sure you can add some questions.
I'm not gonna raise my hand for the public hearing. But I assume someone will ask me to talk anyway. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'll close the public hearing and give it back to you for consideration.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt eighteen oh-seven.
Have a second? I'll second the motion.
As...
Drop eighteen oh-seven A, essentially eliminate eighteen oh-seven A.
I mean, if you, if you adopt eighteen oh-seven...
Eighteen oh-seven A's off the table.
Then you wouldn't want to adopt eighteen oh-seven A afterwards. So you would just not take a...
So that's a legitimate motion. I, I second your motion.
As those, as the one who made the motion, can I exercise my right to speak first during the discussion period on this?
You absolutely can, yeah.
What I'd like to relay is, is that eighteen oh-seven has major problems. I initially voted to approve that and then when nothing was done to really trying to tweak that, I kind of, that's where we had a closed session and we came out and voted five to zero to come up with basically oh-seven alpha. It was, uh, a stalling tactic to buy us some time so that we could fix oh-seven. That still has not been done, but I still think that it's very important that we adopt something to try and stall what is going on. So that's why I'm going back again to wanting to approve oh-seven, but it still needs work. But this time, we can adopt it, but, um, I think we need to have our Planning Board and if need be, our town attorney and town staff work up some language to address these outlier problems like Ms. Osband that was referenced. There's also a Mr. White that was referenced, uh, often in conversations. Andy Ward on the Planning Board has identified quite a few of these outlier issues that I think need to be worked in. But the bottom line is, I'm for adopting oh-seven and sending this back to our staff, the Planning Board, to try and continue to tweak this. Otherwise, this problem is gonna get way away from us in this town.
Are you good with that, Glenn? Thank you.
Hey there, Thomas, counsel.
I'd ask Ben to speak to that outlying, those outliers, if you could.
Well...
I mean, how you, how can we address? I mean, we're talking individual lots, individuals, and lots of them, possibly.
Let me start with my take on the differences between what exists, oh-seven, and oh-seven A. What exists requires recombination in a couple places.
Right.
But it also treats lots that have been built across property lines as a single lot, but doesn't require recombination. In all three, oh-seven, oh-seven A, and the existing ordinance, there's a section similar to section one, which allows someone who has a single, um, non-conforming property, anything under a hundred feet. Commonly, it will be fifty feet wide. But who has a single non-conforming property without any adjacent properties to be able to build upon that lot. And there's a reason for that, because we've talked about this before. If you can't, if you have that island lot and can't build on it, then the law's gonna make that a taking. And the town will ultimately end up having to pay compensation to own that lot if someone can't build on it, can't use it for anything. So section one is generally the same across all three. It's been shortened and tightened a little bit in oh-seven and oh-seven A from what exists. But the concept of what section one does is still there and should stay and should not be removed. The difference between oh-seven and oh-seven A is that oh-seven, my concept was to go with the general idea of, over time, removing all non-conformities. That's the typical concept that people use when dealing with non-conforming properties, structures, uses, is that over time, you want your land use to catch up to what your ordinances are. And what I did in oh-seven was attempted to maximize that. It went, it would address vacant lots in some situations. It would address non-conforming lots that are next to conforming lots. It would even address conforming lots that people had built across property lines and bring them, require recombination in certain instances for those. So it wasn't just non-conforming lots, but it was trying to bring everything together and maximize conformity and maximize the concept of having, if there was a property that had a structure across associated property lines. And then oh-seven A, the council voted to make it so that the only time that recombination was required was when there was an existing or proposed structure actually across property lines. And those property lines, uh, only the properties that the lines were crossed were required to recombine. So that wouldn't have addressed any vacant properties and it would have potentially left properties where someone had built on a lot, built across two lots in the middle and had two lots on either side and had treated it all as one expansive, um, estate. They would have been able to sell the fifty, the non-conforming lots on either end, um, if, if it, if they ever wanted to. So that's the difference between oh-seven and oh-seven A. As for addressing outlier issues, that wasn't an attempt that I was directed to do for either oh-seven or oh-seven A. Can it be done? Probably for most of them. I think the, you know, conceptionally, you, you can deal with lots that have the same, frontage on the same street. You could deal with lots that have a certain percentage of their property lines lined up with each other. There's, there's ways to address, like Mrs. Osband's issue, the Osband lot issue. There's also ways to address potentially, um, lots that have been held as investment lots and have never been treated as an estate-type property. There are probably some people in town who bought years ago land, who bought four lot, four fifty-foot lots next to each other, knowing that they were fifty-foot lots and planned on giving them all to their kids or selling them all to their kids or selling them all at some point in the future, rather than what most people have done, which is like, uh, Ms. Anne, who, I'm not gonna get your last name wrong again. I always do. Who, uh, you know, that they've held it in their family in a way that, that, that probably wasn't the plan. But there are ways to potentially address those. They're not easy. But I think I can think my way through that if, if we need to. And I think there's also some room in oh-seven. Oh-seven was my first shot at dealing with this lately and it was, uh, I'm not perfect. I'll be the, probably the hundredth to admit that. But certainly everyone else will admit it. But I think there's some language about oh-seven A that I would like to incorporate that simplifies some of the things in oh-seven. But oh-seven is a pretty good stopgap if there's a plan to address some of the outlying issues and to address some of the issues that exist in oh-seven. Could that answer your question?
So the answer's yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ben.
At a minimum, I can attempt to address the issues.
Ben, I have a question.
Go ahead, Fred.
There's so many variations and outliers. Rather than trying to make the language so complex and putting quite a burden on the Planning Board, could, could those outliers be addressed through the variance process?
Some of them could be appropriate, but it would depend. Variances are very fact-dependent and they're very situational-dependent. If there, if there are rare circum, really rare circumstances, then a variance is more appropriate. But in circumstances where, uh, there may be more than one, where you have a likelihood of, of more than one sit, of the situation or, you know, the, the larger the number of possible, um, situation being similar, it's probably better to address it in the ordinance rather than a variance. One of, that reminds me of one other thing that's gonna be important to consider if we go back to consider any changes to, um, oh-seven, if it's adopted,
Right.
is, is some direction on how far you want the family member concept to go. Currently, family member includes the spouse, lineal descendants, siblings, parents, and whether related by blood or marriage. Essentially, it's gonna cut off the ability for, um, the sale to the children or the transfer to the children. And there could be some ability to, to address that or to either limit the family or to say that, uh, you know, if gifted, but then again, that, as, as Ben pointed out, every time you do that, you open up a potential hole for someone who comes in and says, "Well, I'll buy it, you know, for me, but I'll put my, you know, give my kid money and let him buy it and then we'll sell it as two fifty-foot lots." And, but the intent isn't the traditional family passing the, the property down. But just one thing to keep in mind is that the current definition of family member is very expansive.
Does oh-seven address, like Anne was talking about, the LLCs? If I've got an LLC and my son has an LLC and we own a property with lots, four fifty-foot lots, can we split them?
It attempts to address that. I mean, it, it's, it's complicated, but it does address, you know, that a lot is owned, you know, same ownership, a lot is owned in whole or in part by a legal entity, so the LLC. And another lot is owned by the same legal entity or by an affiliate of the same legal entity. And then it defines an affiliate as, in the case of a legal entity owner, and a, and it, an affiliate would be an individual who controls the legal entity or another legal entity controlled by the owner. So, uh, in that case, it may not reach that far. I, I'd have, you'd have to see the exact circumstances, um, and, and determine the, the control level.
I, I think one of the things is...
And, excuse me. And then, I forgot that, uh, Mr. Hobbs did the language for the, uh, the, the ownership portion. So he did cover the control. So controlled means the power by ownership, operation, or law contract, and otherwise to direct the supervision or management. So it, it may not incorporate the same concept of, of the family.
As I had stated earlier, I'm, I'm going back to approving oh-seven so that we can do something. I recognize that it's got some problems in there, but I think your question, Councilman, is very apropos. I mean, it needs to be asked. And we could go back, after we pass this and start looking, okay, what does, how far does this family extend? We can tweak this, in other words.
Well, I'm, I'm not questioning that. My question, it's like what Fred said. You were at the planning, I mean, we were basically, four of us were at that Planning Board meeting. They spent a lot of time.
Yes.
Effort, research, and, and basically have worked this thing to death and, um, make recommendations back and forth to us and I just don't wanna put more work back on them by saying, "Hey, we're gonna pass this, but we're gonna send it back and rework it." Make them rework it again. I mean, they've reworked it and actually made some recommendations to it.
I think this needs to be a joint effort with our town attorney, our town staff, our town Planning Board, and even us, you know. We, as a whole town, need to get together.
Let me address your, your comment, Gary. They, the Planning Board has indicated to me very directly that they wish to have this back too, considerate, brother.
Can I just speak for a quick second?
Go ahead.
Is that all right?
Go ahead.
Yes, good.
In my opening comments, I, I made a statement about the importance of, of both of these ETAs. And, you know, as much as we don't wanna see things bouncing back and forth, I think we've gotten to a point now where we're actually in a, in a place where we could finally nail it down and do it the right way. And the fact that it's gone back and forth, all of those recommendations that came from the Planning Board and from, from Mr. Gallup and from the staff, all of those recommendations have been heard and have been taken under consideration. have been heard and have been taken under consideration, and we're not tired yet. So, you know, and, and I, I, I'm, I think I speak for the majority of the planning board. I mean, we, we, we're not tired of this yet. This is an important topic to our town and to each and every one of us, so we are more than willing to, you know, finalize this. But again, our recommendation is that, given the choice between A, oh seven alpha, and oh seven, our recommendation is that you adopt oh seven. And if you want to send it back to us, we're ready.
Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
I think we have a motion on the floor. I think we could both vote on it.
Could I?
Well, I'll...
Go ahead.
Fred, if you want to, did you want to say anything? Let me know.
Um, I'll pretty much support, uh, what you said, Jim. I think we need to pass it, I really do, uh, because, um, there's a lot of rumblings around town that certain people are getting ready to, uh, split these hundred-foot lots into two fifties, and the next thing we know, it's going to be rampant, and I think we need to stop it immediately.
And for my point, Mr. Mayor, I'm torn on this one. I, like Jim and possibly Glenn, I, I see this as a very imperfect solution. I mean, and I appreciate all the time they put into it. Glenn and I have talked about it, you know, and I'm not sure how to get there to deal with all these outliers. I appreciate Ben's comment that these outlying situations, if they start repeating themselves, then we've got to deal with it in an ordinance fashion. Where I'm torn is that neither of these are, are great, and I'm probably the only one to say that, this, but I, I can't support this particular motion because this thing is so broad, this is coming at it with a hammer, and like I said, way back, we need to come at this thing with a scalpel. I've identified a bunch of different conditions, and you guys have identified a whole bunch of conditions, and, um, so while I understand the impulse to just put a stop on it, I do get that, and I do, I understand why folks believe that, and why council believes that. I still feel like we just didn't quite get it yet, and I'm just, I'm not prepared to pass something just to pass it. So I may be the only person to, to say that, but to Jim's point, I guess we could just call for a vote.
I, I guess it's the jarhead in me. I'm good at just tackling something with a sledgehammer, and that, and I recognize that's what we're doing, we're hitting this with a hammer.
It's true.
Um, there's a, there's one other comment that I want to make, and I think it's evident just in the discussion in this room today that this is a very complicated matter, and it's, it's not only complicated to understand what the problem is, but it's very complicated to try and come up with that more perfect solution instead of just smacking it with the sledgehammer or hammer. I think characterizations that some of these council members up here have been unprepared and that we've been kicking this can down the road is grossly out of line. This is a very complicated issue, and we're all, including the planning board, are doing the best we can to address this in a way that does not open the town up to a lawsuit. I'm all for, again, passing oh seven and then continuing to work on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for your comments. I think there's a motion on the floor that I made a few minutes ago inappropriately to, uh, go ahead and pass, uh, CTA zero eight, I'm sorry, eighteen zero seven. All in favor?
Hi.
Question. This is a second reading on this, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just one more, to be clear.
Thanks, Gary. All, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thanks, Chris. I knew it, guessed it. So, Glenn, you have ZTA eighteen oh seven to work with, and, uh, work with staff and the town attorney, and come back to us with some, some refinements, I guess is what I call them. Thank you. Thank you, Council. Appreciate, appreciate those of you who made comments on this too, it was, it was helpful. Go through with that. At this time, we, um, have to appoint a reconstruction task force per Town Code, section six twelve to nine sixty-nine, which is tab five in our books. And basically, I mean, I'm going to ask Wes to speak to this just for a minute, um, our town planner, just to give us some idea what this task force really does, if you would, Wes. We have it in our books, but the audience doesn't have the book, so if you could just give us a little, give us a little update, a briefing.
Thank you, and good evening again, Mayor, members of Council. Um, this comes directly from the Town Code. Uh, you all received a agenda item summary sheet in your packets, and in it, it states the task force is responsible for advising the town council on a wide range of post-storm reconstruction issues. A primary function of the task force is to receive and review damage reports and other analyses of post-storm circumstances, and to compare these circumstances with mitigation opportunities identified prior to the storm, to discern appropriate areas of post-storm change and innovation. As indicated by the ordinance, there should be, uh, two town council members, two planning board members, one board of adjustment member, town manager, deputy town manager, chief of police, fire chief, SCA presidency, POA president, or representative, as well as representative from either the realty or the construction community. And where this all came about, not only is it in our Town Code, but it's, uh, part of our community rating system, uh, process. Uh, right now, we have, I believe it's a class six rating, the town gets to, uh, their policyholders are entitled to a twenty-five percent reduction in their policies. This is one of the many things that Dabney, our CRS coordinator, has to oversee as well as myself, but there are a long list of items that have to be done and checkmarks put beside in order to maintain this rating, and this is just one of those things. Um, I will state that in the Town Code update, um, some of this language has been recommended to be revised, uh, but it still will be a part of it, and it will still obviously be a part of the CRS rating. Um, but with that being said, if I can try to answer any questions you have, if not, those are the main responsibilities and functions of the task force. And knock on wood, hopefully it's not something that would convene often, but, um, it is something that's there.
I'm sorry, I missed the last thing you said.
I said, knock on wood, hopefully it's not a body that will have to convene often because it's only in situations with, after a major storm event, but, uh, it's something that's there and that we have to deal with, and, um, it is what it is.
Makes it easier to get volunteers for a committee that never meets, right?
Well, I wouldn't say never meet, we, I'm scared to say that.
We don't know, we don't know that, it may have to meet. Council, I just, I'd make a suggestion that we, uh, and I'm not, this is not something I have my, waiting in line to do, but I'd make a suggestion that we, uh, for the council member, we have the mayor and mayor pro temp serve in that role. Uh, the planning board, of course, Mr. Mr. Glenn Weider is on that, in that spot, the planning board's Elizabeth Morey. My board adjustment, uh, member, Andy Ward, would be my recommendation to be, to appoint. Uh, he's a builder, uh, active in that industry. Um, the rest of them are pretty, pretty cut and dried down to number, number eleven. Uh, representing me the realty or construction company, I would, I'd nominate Chandler Spar for that, for that role. He's a Realtor and an active Realtor in our town right now, and very, very effective in what he does. I'm open to any suggestion that you guys might have or other, other thoughts you may have on this, but I think we get this behind us by just doing what I just suggested. Any, any thoughts, any comments?
Yeah, I'm good with this, with your recommendations, recognizing that if we ever need to implement this plan, we're probably going to be looking for alternatives because the best-laid plans are mice and men, you know, and during this kind of catastrophe. But I think I'm, I'm good with every one that you mentioned.
I'd make that, make that as a motion.
Who, uh, who were the two council members?
The mayor and the mayor pro temp. But I don't, I don't have a dog in the fight, Fred, if you wanted to take on.
No, 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 I'm not. I just didn't hear what you said.
Matt Neal might be a good representative from the construction community, well, he's here at a meeting.
Yeah, he's president of the...
President of the Builders Association.
Yeah.
That's a...
And a young man that might need to be involved, but he's also a resident of the town. I'll, I'll guess. I probably look like his mom.
I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go quite that far, but, uh, that's fine with me. I, I say I don't have any, I just came up with some people I thought would be able to do the job, and I'd be glad to have Matt serve if he wants to, if he's going to do that. I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Let, Ms. Mayor, I'm going to clarify something. There is such a thing, there's a difference in this group, this committee, and the damage assessment team. This, this is, uh, as described in the ordinance, and only meets if there is a moratorium declared by the council after a major storm. The damage assessment team is utilized by the town planner just about every storm event. So that, the assessment team, we have that in place as a volunteer that, that, um, Wes puts together and helps him doing, um, damage assessment. So they're two separate, two separate things, and they're described as such in the ordinance.
Understood. This is, this is, uh, this goes beyond, uh, a normal storm event where you'd have a couple hundred trees down, and that's about it. This, this is pretty extensive property damage and pretty extensive loss of, of, of people's dwellings. This is Hurricane Katrina here in Southern Shores, and we, we hope we never see that, but that's what, this is kind of what this is for. So let's, we...
Mr. Mayor, we may need a rep with the CPOA since Glenn's already on there and he is president of the CPOA. He could appoint...
Well, it says his representative, they can, they can do that. They can do that.
We need one, so...
Yeah. That's great. That's, I'd leave it up to the individual city association to take care of that. So if we, if we substitute, uh, Matt Neal for Chandler Spar and give this to you guys to consider, would, would I have a, a vote to, to accept those nominations I just made? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. No one's opposed. Motion's made and carried to structure our reconstruction task force like we did. And we're getting close to wrapping up the show, aren't we? Public comment. No one signed up? I just have a couple of things I'd like to say before I, before we shut it down. I want to, uh, say thank you and give a well done to Myrick Dubrowski and his lifeguards this year, did a great job for us, as they usually do. Also, um, Chief Cole mentioned this person a minute ago, but I want to, I want to throw out a kudo here for our community resource officer, Kimberly Johnson, for her service this summer to our town. She's done a great job for us, and, uh, we're glad to have her on board and hope she's successful with her, with her next, with her next step. We'll start with that then, Gary. You have anything you want to say? Fred?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, reiterate, uh, what I said earlier. I attended the, uh, planning board meeting, uh, that was held in August, and I just want to say, uh, Glenn and the whole board did a fantastic job, and I think we got a, a good team. Really did.
Thank you, Fred.
That's all I have.
I'd agree with that. Jim?
Yeah, I'll agree with that too. It was nice listening to him. The one thing I'd like to mention is, is that a few weeks ago, I got a call from somebody, actually lives in Kitty Hawk, but I know him from All Saints Episcopal Church over there, and he brought up an idea that I think is worth pursuing in Southern Shores, and that is, uh, trying to approach the powers that be and open up a branch library in Southern Shores. It's a branch library that could serve the citizens of this town, but also Northern Kitty Hawk and all of Duck. Now, what I'm going to try and do during the next thirty days is just try and talk to some folks off the record just to see, determine the feasibility of it. Already, when I mention this to people, they start asking, well, where would it go? It could go in the marketplace, rented a shop there, or it could go over in Southern Shores Landing, it might go in some of those commercial buildings across, um, Jennifer Trail where Quibble used to be, I don't know what that development is called, or it could be a freestanding building, but I think rather than focus on where it will go, let's, I want to try and focus on the feasibility of getting it done, and maybe even talk to our sister towns, Duck and Kitty Hawk, to see if they'd get on board with it. Anyway, it was a good idea that came from somebody not even in our town, but I think it could be a good thing to pursue, and I'll try and bird dog that issue over until we meet again.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion, Council? If not, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, go into closed session pursuant to North of Cleveland General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight point one one six for purpose of considering qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of employee. Thank you. Good night, folks.